We are ready to start. And we are going to request, as we start, that we all rise to our feet. We will sing the national anthem. And we request that all men remove their headgear, please. And thereafter, we will outline how the program is going to unfold. Thank you very much. Once more, on behalf of the Portfolio Committee on Transport, we thank you for taking time to be here as we undertake a public hearing on the Rail Safety Regulator Bill. Why is the interpretation so long? Alright. In front of you are the members of parliament whom I will introduce to you. On my extreme right is is Honorable Member Ramadua, who is a member of parliament and a member of this Portfolio Committee. The issue is that I'm starting with the local people, so they are going to try and shine more than me, the chairman, which is a challenge. Next to her is Honorable Bilangulu, Member of Parliament of the Portfolio Committee too. Next to him is Honorable Kumalo, Member of Parliament and also of the Portfolio Committee. Next to myself on the right, not that he is from the right wing, but is Honorable McDonald. On my extreme left is Honorable Sitole. Next to him is Honorable May. Next to him is Honorable Mabena. Last but not least, to my left, it's got nothing to do with his ideology, it's Honorable Hunzenga. And these are the members of Parliament of the Portfolio Committee. It's a multi-party committee which is working very, very well, as you can see. And we are here to listen to you. So the most important people today is yourselves to listen, to talk to us, that is why we are here. Now, how we are going to conduct this is in the following way. I'm going to introduce later the acting mayor who is representing the mayor to officially welcome all of us here. After that, I will give you a high-level brief of what the Rail Safety Bill is all about. Thereafter, I will sit down and will give you, the people of Makado and the surrounding, the opportunity to talk to us. On my extreme left, your right against the wall there. Those are parliamentary staff. Their purpose of being here is to record everything that you are going to say today. So if you talk and you see that the members of parliament are not taking notes aggressively, don't be worried and say, "I wonder if they are taking notes." Because everything is going to be captured. There is also an opportunity for you to give written submissions if you so wish. And that you can do by getting a form from that desk. They can either help you write if you would like, or give you a form, or give you an email address to which you can email your inputs later. When you do speak, you are allowed to speak in the language of your choice. There will be, and there is, interpretation on all our official languages. Lastly, we know that the community has got a lot of issues that are burning to them, that are affecting them. Our request is that we confine ourselves as to why we are here, which is the Rail Safety Bill. There might be issues of electricity that affect all of us, roads, litter picking, water. That is not what we would like to hear from you today about. Although we will not shut you down, but we appeal that we confine ourselves to the Rail Safety Bill. So with no further delay, I'm going to call upon your own councillor, your own local leader, Councillor Lorraine Mashamba, who is the acting mayor here today, to welcome all of us in this place. Thereafter, I will take my place and carry on with the program. Councillor.
Thank you. Greetings everyone of us. Standing right here, as the chairperson has mentioned, I'm Councillor Mashamba, Lorraine. Standing today as an acting mayor of this municipality Makado, on behalf of Mayor Munyai, aka known as Dubabuse. I really, I'm standing here just to welcome you. Every stakeholder is here, different stakeholders who are here today. We've got the councillors, what councillors who are here feel welcomed. Youth Council feel welcomed. Disability Forum feel welcomed. ANC and the party, and the alliance structures feel welcomed. And all other political parties who are here today feel welcomed. I'm going to acknowledge and welcome the traditional leaders from the different villages we come from and that the Makado Local Municipality. Thank you. I'm going to welcome our very special guests, who saw it fit to come and address with the localities of Makado Municipality. The group of parliamentary, the Department of Transport, of parliamentary, national parliamentary. It's such an honour to have you here in Makado Municipality. You are welcome fully. Feel free to engage with us, to engage with the community regarding this railway safety bills. We've got so much to learn. Take every input that is, that's gonna be, that's be, that's gonna be shared with us here and take note of them. I'm not the main speaker of this event. Let me take this opportunity and give back to the chairperson once more. Feel welcomed, feel welcome, the department, the whole Parliament of South Africa. Feel welcome, feel free, share with us whatever you've got. You are welcome at Makado Municipality. Thank you, Chairperson. You may proceed.
Thank you very much, Councillor Mashamba. We appreciate the warm welcome. I was just worried that she's talking a bit too long. You know, I want to feel like I'm in charge. That was on a lighter note. Okay, this is what is going to happen now, so that we can go straight into it. I'm going to sit down, not out of disrespect, but I just want to take you through the bill highlights as I said. Thereafter, we are going to invite you to give us your input. Everyone wants to speak will have an opportunity. We are going to take ten speakers per time. We are going to ask you to come to the centre where there are chairs. Unless you are unable to move where you are, which will make a plan. When it is your turn, we are going to ask you to step forward to the mic, introduce yourself, who you are, who you represent, if you represent an organisation. But even if you are representing yourself, you are more than allowed. At the beginning of your input or at the end, we would appreciate an indication of whether you support the bill or you do not support it. As I said, we are not here to answer questions, so there is no question or answer session. We are here to listen to you. We also ask also that we give each speaker an opportunity to speak. Let's not howl at anybody. Let's not interrupt anybody. You might not like them, you might not like their organisation, you might not like what they are saying. But they've got a right to be heard. And that's what we want to hear. So I hope we are very clear. Thank you very much. So I will then take you through the bill at a very high level. I hear a lot of rumblings. I don't know if there is a challenge. Okay, if there is no challenge, we ask that we be as quiet as possible. And if you would like to communicate with whoever is next to you, you are more than welcome to step outside rather than disrupt the whole meeting. As I said, the bill before us of which we are here for is the Rail Safety Bill. The purpose of this bill, it seeks to improve the regulatory framework of rail safety in our country. This bill, once passed into an act or if passed into an act, will replace the National Rail Safety Regulator Act. This bill, in its title itself, it says it's a rail safety bill. So I will take you clause by clause of what are the key things in each clause that this bill seeks to address. I will be in clause one now. It just deals with definitions there in terms of what is in this bill. If there might be an interest in your, in the definitions, that's the clause you will deal with. Clause two also technically legally deals with the application of the bill. Clause three deals with the objects of the bill, many of which I am talking to now. Clause five deals with the uninterrupted continuation of the Rail Safety Regulator. In other words, it gives us a transition from the existing act to the new act once enacted. Clause seven deals with the functions and powers of the Rail Safety Regulator and which is the act that we are saying we need to replace. Clause eight provides for the Rail Safety Regulator, the minister to administer and deal with any international agreements that might be there. Clause ten, clause eleven, clause twelve, clause thirteen, up to clause sixteen. Maybe let me put it this way, clause ten to clause seventeen, deals with the issue of the appointment of the board. Who qualifies to be in the board, who doesn't qualify. The powers of the minister to appoint or to remove any member of the board. All those are contained in the clauses that I've already picked up or highlighted. Clause nineteen, clause twenty, twenty-one, again deals with similar issues of the board, how to dissolve a board, and all the functions of the board. That is also contained in seventeen to twenty. When we start from clause twenty-two, clause twenty-three, clause twenty-four, let's say clause twenty-two and twenty-three deals with the administrative appointment of the CEO or the functions of the CEO or the administrative functions thereof. Clause twenty-four, twenty-five, also makes provision for the appointment of staff and how that will be done in terms of this bill or the act at the later stage. Clause twenty-seven deals with the funding of the Rail Safety Regulator. Beyond an appropriation of money from parliament, what are other means that the Rail Safety Regulator can use to raise funds for itself? From clause thirty-one, clause thirty-two, and clause thirty-three, deals with what we call a rail safety permit. The rail safety permit, how it is issued. How it is surrendered. What conditions can be imposed on a permit when it is issued. All those you'll find in those clauses. Clause thirty-five deals with a new element, which is a training or accreditation of training institutions as it relates to rail. Deals with the process of registration, application, up to the process of accreditation thereof. Clause thirty-six deals with the powers of the minister to be able to develop instruments which can assist the implementation of rail safety standards. Clause thirty-eight deals with the issue of establishment of a consultative forum. Whereby operators, on an ongoing basis, can be consulted or can consult. One of the key things that I introduced in this bill is the introduction of what we call safety inspections and safety inspectors. So clauses forty-one up to clause forty-six deal with the appointment of inspectors and the manner in which rail safety inspections are to be conducted. Clause forty-seven deals with the powers of rail safety inspectors. Clause forty-nine, clause fifty, deal with the obligation that is placed on a operator to report any occurrence or incidents that they might get involved in or with. to report any occurrence or incidents that they might get involved in or with. Clause fifty gives powers to the minister as to determine which incident or occurrence should be investigated as a major occurrence. Clause fifty-three gives powers to the minister in the event that he or she would like to appoint a commission of inquiry that he or she can do in terms of clause fifty-three. Like in any organization where there is governance, there might be people who are aggrieved by one thing or the other. Clause fifty-four to fifty-six deals with what are the appeal mechanisms that anybody who's aggrieved can employ. Clause sixty-three up to clause sixty-five, empowers the minister to issue or make regulations that could support the implementation of the national, of the act once it is enacted. Clause sixty-nine, as I said earlier, once this bill is passed into law, there must be a transition so that there is no collapse of services to the next act. So clause sixty-nine deals with that. Last but not least, clause seventy deals with the repeal of the previous act, which is the National Rail Safety Regulator Act, so that it dies a natural death and a new act is put in place. What I've just done is a very high-level summary to try and pick up things that I really believe are important, that I knew I might not have covered everything. This is not by any means to limit you to comment on the things that I would have spoken about. So at this moment, I am going to invite you to talk to us. So we are going to take hands, as I said earlier. And if I've not counted you, you will have a chance. Again, as I said, as I point at you, we request that you please kindly come and stand and sit in the middle. You will be shown where to sit. And then we will remind you again, you are number one. No, don't interpret the numbering, I'm sure they will hear it, so that we, we do it quite quicker. You are number two. You are number three. Can we be silent as much as possible? Uh, the one with a pen in the hand, you are number four, and the one behind, you are number five. Then I come to the side. Can Baba interpreter sit down, please, so that I can see the people? Please sit down. Number six. Number seven. Number seven, with a yellow, yes, you are number seven. Is your hand up? You are number eight, yes, you see, you can follow. Any other hands? Two more hands, anya na, two, anya na, to fill the ten. Okay, it's okay, we will start with those ones so that we don't delay. Again, if I may repeat, you introduce yourself. If you represent an organization, tell us. If you don't represent an organization, nothing wrong with that. We ask that you limit yourself to three minutes, and we ask that you remove any preambles. We have greeted everybody for you, so just go straight to the points. Can we have very low speaking amongst us, please? I know it's a Saturday, but it's not an afternoon. Uh, are we ready? Are we ready? Let's go. The first one, let's go. Please help him with the mic, it's very low. I, thank you. I didn't hear you introduce yourself, did I miss it?
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much, Communist.
My, my name is Saddam Jeffrey Masuta, uh, representing the ANC and its alliance structures. I do support the bill. Uh, which I, I do not support or do not want to see is the privatization of this railway transport. So I also need the security will be employed in this, uh, area to be, uh, employed by government instead of, uh, procuring private security. Uh, this mode of transport should also be user-friendly to the disabled people and where there are no trains around here, they need to be provided. Thank you.
It's Itani Patrick Mabada. I'm representing South Africa Communist Party. Uh, first and foremost, I would like to appreciate the ability to come to us to address this railway safety bill. I will quote what once Julius Senyare has said. He said Africans are meant to be instructed, they don't have philosophy. What we request from you, we have children behind us. Never ever sell this railway safety bill to individual. Let's say there are people from Saudi Arabia, they have lot of money. When they come to our office, never allow them. It must be a structure that is going to be instructed by or oversee by the government. Uh, even if you don't have money, in Africans, they say, "Biki, Biki Makmir." You will have money so that our children won't suffer to go and look around for, 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 for job uh, to other people whereas we have infrastructure that will, that will benefit from. What is your plan? Because we have Toya Nuu, it's a town. We have Malamlele, it's a town. Consider us.
I am Mr. Mabada, representing the South African Communist Party. And as you have heard, he took most of his time using this language. So I will start where he used the vernacular. Uh, he is indicating that there is a need for us to improve in terms of rail transport because the roads are being destroyed because they are carrying heavy loads. Those trucks that are transporting, uh, uh, goods can be replaced by the railway lines. And it's also indicated that as parliament, there is a need for, for, for you to find a way to, to make money. And they also need, I mean, also indicated that we also need uh, the airways locally that will assist in transporting goods from different, I mean, from here to different provinces. Uh, he cited an example of, uh, president, thank you.
Ine ikonyaga security, ine adoba strong. Ni kumbelo ya shuri nori, heziri ngangomuka rail, riverika safety. Heziri ngangomuka safety, riverinduni ya javelo ya uri, ridosika roperela. Ine dikodanga ya opesisa, ni inendari, itola vutu. Now says poverty, nera kovana yonavanavashu. Ungari rail ingabe kore disera mishumo, isko jia mungumutu nganda, ane akobizo individual uri. Uko dotova pleni ya uri, uko yopumisa ene navanavawe. Ibe yotanda vua from the governor, ichiko general governor avashuri. Habava nava ukono uana, huneva imahoni, bumachero habo. But ibezo bako hayariwa, ngadzisitifkati zebagenera zunichkoro. Pati opesisa ndiyawuri, now today, uko ngoro vatu vane bafi. Ni eighteen years to thirty-five. Mara hunafuti yopela from, araba chku yea accountori, from A118 Hongo Schuma. Abia sika, une oricha forty, asadibur good morning. Zino ndiziner kori, hey alliance musiozura. Ayese zisese zabo duruna, i poverty, i criminality, i kodahaani. Iko danga oshaya hamishuma vanavashu.
Uh, Mr. Itanene Mukawani, representing the pastor forum. Thanking parliament for bringing this to the people. Uh, he's indicating that there is a need for renovation in this railway infrastructure and also emphasized the need for security to be tight in order to safeguard the lives of the commuters. Uh, he believes that the railway lines will, I mean, the, this bill will provide jobs for all who reside here, not only the few who will be preferred. Uh, and he believes that only the qualified will be employed. Uh, he has a problem with the allocation of jobs to the youth between uh, nine, uh, nineteen, eighteen and thirty-five when it comes to leadership and internship. Uh, he is indicating that there is a need to go beyond that age in order to accommodate others who will be in need of these jobs.
Ni kore vua. Rechima platform on otoma atambulu atambulu wanyana. Ni, nandi piye zekele mugwiri. Ni chiko vakachi misoachabo Ramadanga, kawadi twenty-six. Ni, nwe imaa apa, nwe imela Boramadanga vote. Fezi ayere kore vua musi rikovana parliament yozura. Ichikonyo gotu odifera ngazayo ndewe. Ga uri mapungo aurume rwa Adina. Zino, rine sabaramadanga rikotendo ri, oyo murayon, rikotanganeza. Chiporo ndikare simbizo zoku ulazicheta mushuma wazi. Snorikori anga ule dava honi, ndoditika ngachi poro. Ndoditika ngachi poro. Zagamomu chiporoni archakono odipinanga azu. Snorikori oyumulayo rikutanganeza rikori chiporo kachi be honi. Ubavone archi poro kidodi samishuma midikabatu. Chitichi kine ndabatsina chwende chilani chofimara. Heziki chitichi chilani arali chapati vua. Bevano zlo pandashu, nachi renovators zabo di. Na ira zisecurity, na itaru uben nadi pidacha mishumu. Vomiashu nazikala zashe abakoshuma. Mara napata zindu ngapa ngangomu, ziyamori mishumoidoba iho. Ngauraro ndikori, kari ne vora Madanga. Rikori hezini nikidopa za utachi poroi. Rikumbela uri, niri itere bu safety azufu azaxu. Ankeni unedava honi rofu vua. Unakolo omo, unadongi, unambudzu, unangu. Zifukafuka chiporoni, fezi ayer rikotendo ri musi bevano nikiriki. Nijiko uchumisa chiporoi, ziyamori zufu zaki zudoba zisafe. La opesisa ndela uri, regatakara kamusi. Zoto vana hunaa hunatreni za local. Zineza Doba zikore vana zikorisapulukwani, uneyava ri ndikameniti tiashu. Zi ziyamori pitasbeke ngacha vakuuri musi bevano nikoshuma. Locally training zishumofana nadi obeki. Isongo shaba shosholoza itoba ya limpopo training ine ya vana ngamachiro ngamadekwan. Ziyamori nabatubangi bane bakoshuma Pulukwani, badowa na bu safety. Aralwe, readi bori tikidi zabewa asizogula abatu. Snorifara ningadire ine yon, uzukera, nikidoba razukochimbe. Ndikore vua.
My name is Ezekiel Mugwili representing the local stock farm, stock farmers. From what, twenty-six. He is thanking parliament for taking trouble to come to this area to brief them about the bill and also support the bill. He is saying that they rely much on rail transport and if the infrastructure is destroyed, they are unable to travel from their residence to where they're supposed to go. So this bill, he believes that it will provide much needed jobs. And it's also indicated that the Mara Station needs sort of renovation. And also, security should be built. And he believes that if this is in progress, there will be jobs to be provided in the process. He is also worried about stock safety, suggesting that when this rail infrastructure is being renovated, there is a need also to consider the safety of the crossing animals that they will be heading. He is also indicating that there is a need for local trains that will take people from these residents to our local city which is Pulukwani. Because he believes that the rail transport is cheap. Yeah, that is all.
Good morning, everybody. Atingavi narapiisa, Makadidepi ubaka wadleva, kari yo biga ho. Dalishumaka ayo kampani, SAR, Sporva. More than twenty-five years yo tenis koshuma hona right in Jobek. Mara chinesa kontraka zana olisongo ubuya peshinini ubya ngapage. I'm saying, thank you very much. Arali bakowisa kampani ndashumaka ayo. Nderikabo ndari, vasongo ah angoravana bazino vaya skuru. Mutu opasa ugrade twelve. Otaya ana uyolisa tkoromo, gunakampani kuruano ngorala ya abachi disa kontrakam din. Ya erananewa ndabatsa kunungu vana. Please, railway kavue. Ngabe ndina uchi vandani dorre isongo vua ngori natungoto ubiya peshinini nubya ngapage. Mara ngori ndina vana, please. Kaba zite, ndesa tubi yamzimambiza, ndezibone zichiko itaya. Ndkono drova ndigwerere Jobek, ndito yo daara, ndisichero ushuma. Ma ipianga ma tugotoko tutuweza uri ne, gopusu kanya ho, nerine barema. Makuwawa abachi kontelela, bachi ira mutumwe namungwe, basake turu. Au chenches ngositu nanepalaka department ya Jobek. Ndolibu. Nda.
Greetings, my name is DP Makado. I used to work for Spornet for more than thirty-four years. He is also indicating that we don't have to forget that these railway lines need to rebuild. And if that is done, it must be done when it's still alive so that you can also enjoy the trip from here to Jobek. Going there as a visitor, not as an employee anymore. So he believes that the current government, or the black government, has destroyed this infrastructure. And they believe that the previous government maintained it in a manner that is acceptable affair. So he is encouraging us, the current government, to improve from where it is so that the infrastructure can be back to normal again.
We want railway lines, passengers and good train to be controlled above the state because this is the government of the people by the people. The government should appoint police for the rail transport like it has been done to the borders. Services such as cleaning food can be given to small businesses owned by the first and foremost South African. Governments should establish tax ranks at the train station. There should be a small shops for cars. Good trains should be open to all so that if I want to buy things at Jobek, I can tell someone to buy for me and transport it by train. Railway should be extended to a farming community and our rural township. Railway should be under the state because if it's under someone's hand, it will be very difficult for us poor to get the job because if my name is not known, I won't be able to get the job. I thank you.
My name is Solomon Litore. Chairperson of Pastors Community Concern. Do support the bill, especially to thirty-seven, which the program director has impeded.
Sorry, sorry. Can we please reduce our volume and give respect to the speaker, please? Can we reduce volumes? Please go ahead.
To be done. All right, should I start from the beginning or should I proceed? Okay, my name is Solomon Litore. Chairperson of Pastors Community Concern. Do support the bill, especially thirty-seven. The minister should support. On the nineteenth of, I'm presenting Chief Sintumule, Chief Gutama, Livubu Organization of the Farmers and Pastors Community Concern. Now, on the nineteenth of January, we did a meeting with Plaza or Translax, those people who are controlling the train and the railway. We held the meeting. We did ask before the train could come that the train should be back. And I appreciate because the train is back and started by stopping there to Makado Loitrichat Station. Now, what I want to suggest is that in our meeting when we proceed about the matter, we did send some papers to ask the minister to come on our side in a reason that the proposal which has been done on that day, from here Loitrichat, you just pass Magao. When you pass Magao, you are going to Granite Station. We proposed that there should be a new line which will pass a mile scope, Ilim, Prosidilivubu, Vwani, Malamulele until the big mall which is called Talani Mall. There is a stadium there. Now, case the chiefs and pirates, when they play there, in other words, you won't get in a two coach or three coach, it would be more because the people, they will be in a train supporting the mall. Now, we did send some documents to the office of the minister on the twenty-two June twenty-twenty-two so that the minister should come on our side to support by thirty-seven, that one to support. Since, we never saw the minister. However, the office of the premier and the office of the mayor, they did support what I'm saying. Lastly is that they are saying to start in a new way that could go to Tavani Mall they could create four hundred new jobs. So I will be happy for you as a committee, parliament, who came today. Whomever minister, talk to him to come here. And my phone is here and then I will submit this, I don't know whom should I hand it over, these papers, or this side.
Yeah, he's indicating that he needs the minister here. We are not here to eat, to take responsibility.
My name is Tulani. Okay, no, I was fine. Okay, my name is Tulani, surname Ramara, Chairperson of South African Youth Council and Makado Municipality. Mine is to say, history will judge us sitting here. As young people, we should stand and be firm about this thing. I believe and trust that the bill is fine except the issue of privatizing. We cannot sit here and allow our land and things that belongs to us to be privatized. That one, I say totally no to that one. Because if we privatize the railway line, we want to say in five to seven years after the railway line, it's rearranged. We will have a problem of the train. Because minority of people will take those trains and they will belong to them. I'm telling you, you won't be able to be inside those trains because they are going to be expensive and very much expensive. They won't tell you not to be in the trains, but they will just make sure that the trains are expensive. So I'm saying, we support the bill unless they are saying they are privatizing them. If there is privatizing, we are not supporting them. But if they are not privatized and they belong to government, that's when we are going to support that. As a young person standing here, that I know that my kids and those ones who I'm leading and the ones behind me, they are going to judge me by the decision made today. I'm saying, we are not going to support anything that is being privatized. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before the last speaker speaks, I want to take more hands so that we can flow. I also want to acknowledge the presence of the mayor. On my right, I've got the mayor. On my left, I have the former acting mayor. I don't know who's in charge. But I've got all power around me. Mayor, you are welcome. We have been welcomed already by councilor who you sent. So we truly appreciate your presence. It means a lot to us to be amongst some of our own public representatives. We also do welcome in our presence the speaker, Councilor Boy. Which side is the, oh, this side. I'm seeing this one who's very light, other side you. You are welcome, Speaker. Just don't make a mistake, you are part of us as oversight over the mayor and others. So don't take sides with the mayor, just a word of caution. So thank you so much, we appreciate your presence. Okay, let's take hands. Where do I start? The one standing there is intimidating me. You are number one. The one who's standing two, number two. Number three, right at the back with a book, you are number three. The one right in front here, you are number four. You are number five. Are you, is your hand up? Yes, number six. No, five was behind you. You can go, you are number six. You've got space. Okay, I'll come to this side. The interpreters have got this very good tendency of obstructing my view, I don't know why. The one with the cap right here, you are number seven. Yes, you are number seven. Not the white cap, the gray cap. Seven, go to the seat, please, so that, okay. Number seven, let's note number seven. Okay, we'll take another number seven behind him with the white cap. I will remember you after number six. Seven, eight, with a book or paper. Number nine, yes, with that hand, you are number nine. Yes, you. Yes, you are number nine. Okay, you are number ten. But the team that is helping us here, remember there is somebody after number six who's seated there who needs to be assisted. Mama, please go ahead so that we can flow.
Ndi koli vua ne kazo yachipida, ichino nichenda ne kazo achone. Nengazina difereichana machava. Ndi wanere ya kawa, kawa di twenty-four. Nwe imela vafumakazina vana. Ndi kofa nikoli vua ngamanda, ndofa zonchaka zangamanda ndawanori, nikiri zichamzimu. Uri riwanena parliamenti kokonoda, pana nava railway line, ziporo nasudimala zikokonoda vaja davo, javusurusi vavo.
Rifaleti Zuliwua, and there is Tukalua, Kajiwuya, Jukonovreza, Mita Yaworine, Nava Nawa Worine, and there is Jovary Takari, there is Jukowuya. Kahuva Nachitichi Midoro. Kahuva Nachitichi Murare. Kahuva Nachitichi, she never, Jukoriri, never Jukova, Murare. Can I Jukova, Best Dorbu. Jukoya Makado, Jukosikanda Cha. Jukova Amaki Cha. Jukodo Cha, Murare. Don't ever Jukimera.
To other areas using the same transport if we develop it. Thank you.
Thanks Chair, Honorable Members and the leadership of our municipalities. Chair, we are sitting here talking about railway. And since the dawn of democracy, there has never been any new railway network built by our government in this area. The only railway network built in this country even is the one of Haotrain in Haoteng there. And it is quite expensive to use. So we standing here to say the railway networks that are there were built during apartheid to address the needs of the then government. If we are to talk of railway right now, we call on you to say go and build railway networks where there's never been networks and where it's much needed to also improve the economic emancipation of our people. For example, in this area of Makado, the railway network only goes through this town of Makado, of Loistrichat. But if you check the way the economic activity is spread in this area, Ilim area is now developing into a town. You look at Njererebea, but it's developing into a town. We want a railway network that will include all those areas. And also coming to the reasons why the current railway network collapsed. It's because of the criminal activities, it felt unsafe. And we call to say, can you, when you revitalize these railway networks, allow, for example, if you look, you go to the airport, there's the airport traffic and airport security. If you go to the, to the, to the, to the, to the oceans, there is also a force that protects the ocean. Can we have a railway force or a railway police that will strictly deal with the security issues of the railway networks? Thank you Chair.
Mpo, sorry, you are on TV man, you don't want them to miss your face. So stand on that line and try and face us straight.
Alright.
Yeah, the black line in front of you, you are on TV, nah?
Yeah.
Okay.
They show on a TV. So, you know, they go river to watch one. Una batu banne, aniko ba umburela and awa tu niwone banne bakuita zori, zipo rozchi nyale, zituiwe, zitu ngandera yote. Batu wasongo, ndando boka grade eight. Ni koi mela rene, rezo ngopasa grade twelve, nakamini gorri, arko valiwa ufi, riapukwa mshumo. And still more, do continue, are chikutu zipo ro. Namusi ba chikudisa, chipo ro. Abave bo ba harami shumo ya ba grade twelve, opasa uba university, bave ngaplane ya bo. Va divori, abala ba ngorotero boka grade eight. Ni ripamishumo, jambo rena wa nasdimera, zina mashika. Ni apone na teopari na rasuka ratli na raita mini, nichu wa nazi, zipo ro zikuita so. Ni pari ne la mshumo yoreme ra mirafu. Abala bo funze ya, niwone banne bakukila shangula South Africa. And ba ba isana ri nernera bo ro zura, ka, ka rural area. Reko wa na zori, nozura nganengoni wa, niwad committee and the speaker, cha, cha, cha civic, angaya. Niwa niwokushuma na committee. Batu banji banne bampassaport, niwatu wasongo funze ya. Abala ba ne bo funze ya, niwito ba izana meeting, bampopology zoba la. So wait two. Rinere, rezo ya ochikuruni, please, arali nicho railway, ichkudisa, esitu. Arangawa ni mutu ana ko baka otengi, adapa lani, amaspara rana akushuma na rinako baka otengi. Una zonki, zodera ri, nernera ba pan. Kana ni security, ba isaka uwa amaspara, komba, chenda rano. Railway, aite uri, ina security ayoyo, ichita security ayoyo, ichi visa zipost, kayi zipise, ichi diva zori. Abala ba na wasongo guda o, ya ba thora, yo pezabgebe. Anachpinga cho umbro uyotza, ngorodo wa amishumo. Achichaisa uko ya edera, achuboko jena mshumoni, anachpinga cho uyotza. Jambo ri, polisi yantu, yori riwa ne zori, reko teliwa zipo ro na mini everything. Ido ba isip, mara, arali na jia wa la watu basina grade twelve, ababa basina, awa, awa na chitu. Wakadudu nki la mo. And niwone banne, niwana ri, some of the mayor azabo re na mini, niwa na zotu nchi weti mini, ndindawa ya zozongo, awa na chitu. Va pisonga va chikuita zilai, vako ya wa na chela de samo. Mara na wa thora, ni do bo na gebe ngana mini, nichi wa isip, na ngangumo wa traini ra ba, ra ba isip. Chingo cha ubili. Line yo goya Ilim, unas badera. Eh, chipo ro chi ati orichi goya chi angi. Sa Jobek, Regisco Park Station, niya zbona traini zodara zoto, apa berbonanti. Edi, kana gutu la dalolo, lo, lo, akamatoro kissi ma wili. So, itani uri village zote, arali ba iskori town to town, chi bapa cha wa ra, tuando, ba tuando malamlele. Cha konochavi angawa, cha tumajana ba cho ya Tsanin site. Ziwasi right here, akonochimira, richi diva zawi, rekoye guy, ba texti ba do wa namishumo na bo, even there. Gorri ba do divori, gama deko wa na traini, kodui ma shandaani, yo wa la watu ba mashamba ba guy. Baya bayi manacheksia nepala, ra jena cheksini ra tu. Karikreti mshumo, roseza, batu bo ote. Baya niagawa tu wa ne ba bo ri, bangasgi mtua grade twelve, bamdisa ra dabes security, adaklini traini, adaklini. Uko jera, oyo ana snachitu, angasko onupuke ra ne grade twelve ya ya oni, why grade twelve chi wa la? Nda.
Thank you so much, my name is Mpo Sadiqi from Hamashamba, ward eleven. I only have three things to talk about, which talks about the security in the railway system. Firstly, there are people you are taking for granted, and these are people that are vandalizing our infrastructure. So there must be a plan that you must put in place, which will provide and create jobs, especially for the less or the semi-skilled people and those that only have grade eight. Because if you can look around, there are people who are working, who are doing double, or rather who are rendering double services, like a security guard will be working as a cleaner also. And those are things that we need to get. As you can see, I'm from a local struc- local civic structure. So we are saying, we need a railway line that will connect all the local villages, from here to Ilim, to Tsanin and other areas around. And we are saying, you need to create jobs. Don't, when you create jobs, don't only look at those that are educated. There are those who left school at grade eight and lesser grades and lower grades, they also need to be catered for. Secondly, I want to talk about the Ilim Hospital. There's a dire need to have a railway line to that hospital. And all villages, if we can connect them with a railway line, it will also create jobs and help the taxi operator since they will also benefit. I thank you.
Ni kolibuwa, une wa chpinga chinga ba Chair percent. Niwa Kasim Tumure tribal council, zinalanga ndifiki Godfrey Madongo. Zenda imera zone, ndezawo ri, rekolebuwa, boko nosika, baridarela, ba dokonupha bukuwa ashu, uneroko wa ama. Zine ra vanazu apwa, ndezawo ri, ba ralueni kayi buye, ido ba ikokreta mshumo, ufana na kaare. Zine zwa koto kakea pezi, ndinkamusie, rekonya go thora, zemwe, azuya ama apwa, asumbe zisela. Ga uri, basedai, rote, rothwa marsakonochimira, roto gudisuo chimira. Mara bo ne musi ba chi advertiser posova, do wa kwamba experience. Chi ne, ne na bo ne atiburi ba chikuwa nanga api, chipiruni echo, ga uru botoma basinacho. Ziyambori, chipiruni chisomushumisi iwa, ga uri, bana ba gasitoli iwa. Ga uri, achitwa pezajikolo, anachipirio ni, auna ye, ayahone, ashuma ono utoma. Ziyambori, bo ne kavaje, honoyo, asongobi ya ba anachipirio ni, angasiba pezabutada. Ga uri, au ene hadibina chitu kazwa shango. Ba chipiruni, ba chwenya, zitereka zitoma ngabo. Mara oya snachipiruni, salary ba dumupayene, yoba ya yambori, ni two hundred ete. Oyo wa chipiruni, angasko de two hundred ete, odoto da two fifty, basi seze nazese. Chingo apu, chaira chinjanga chonde cha uri, renazipo ro, zuzawa zopa, zine ra ziponchi. Zine zwa zura kazpichi, zitoku zashu, zo fana na cha Madombija, cha fana na cha Skumansdal, Raya Nasile Rest. Bo zitu size zuzwa ziponchi. Ziyambori, arando oda zidina, zichko dangaku strani. Azungakonui, uiponcha, yatitza gustrani la ya waro chi dina, yakonori, rekono chuwane ra tini. Ziyambori, kava ya basedore, ba do wa ba desa ziponchi ezila, rekuetelore, musiro oda zitu. Zichko dangaku strani, zikonosika zitseti ne na ayani, ziyambori transporto ido ba yopungu zaya. Ufrorire ndedende zitsovelele, chitandaani. Richko kwamba nga mapungo azifuwa, ba do wa no ri, apwa une, abana zibada, zina apira, traini na zigoro. Kawari tere, chipo ro echila chi ne, cha ba chi na miri ndi, ine koro menge askono udoyu fu kapa la. Ga uri, ichi fu kai, inga dibai ko daya wo, chaisana na guz, dinga zozifuwa zashu, ziko va isare. Kane zizpichi zashu zitoku, kobe na zistorechi, renama brase ya pa tini, akoliima. Ziyambori, do wa na mimara, gainera tokonoveya, zitu zashu zastoriwa, gutu la jia, la tuisa, ndorebuwa.
Mr. Godfrey Madondo, representing Simtumure Kutama Tribal Council. Thanking Parliament for being here. He believes that when advertising posts, we need to avoid seeking for experienced people only. More especially if you want to employ the youth. Because he believes that if they are coming direct from schools, they won't be having enough experience for that particular positions. He believes that the small stations like, in the areas like Madombija and Skumansdal, they need full support and rehabilitation so that they can be assisted in terms of transporting the goods. He believes that the goods trains need to also be given full support for them to assist in ferrying their goods to other markets. There is a need for underground ways for animals, where there are these railway lines. And also, he sees a need for storage for local farmers so that they can store their goods. And when the trains for goods come, they just pick from the where they have been stored in the station. Thank you.
Nda, ndi fini wa Ramano, uvamdu na Kutama ndime la, another representative, like a business for the youth. Zunandi go do ambajone apa, the demand is never go to darina, savara ba bindu batunku, uvapone ra zura one. Nedi zra, ngafa si Zoot Pansberg. So, zunandi uwa ambajone zori, renasho tijikulwa ne, kawo ra ma bindu, richi dakha urana zisbusiness, around vendor. Shangla vendor, likonya ga tusenji, richi dakho supplier, zitu, zine rega supplier, musiro zidini sakabusiness. Una zuné, batwa barere uchikisa umbo feitu, ngandawa ya transporto. So zunandi niwodu mbera zone na musi, ba trawa Parliament, zawi ri, rekomba ri, ubena expanda zirere railway network. Zurwa ne nutian, ujuro tusawo ra ma bindu ote, ba revenda. Nando i mapan, ba niwaga ba niwokimera basu, mara, una ba ngoba ne ndikare ba ka business, ubia bo tongala. Ngandaber zone, azichimiri, musi ba chiteo tusare ya ga, ga, ga transportation, bawa na zichko du ra, ngandawa ya, ota balance ya inkomis, so rekomba ri, traini, expandiwa, petwa pampa na ufana na, lipala le, connecta na Loistrichat, Njerere, Ilim, tayando en musina. So, and ka, ka batu banja ere, ba do wa zuburi, Presidente, wa announce zidu zwa special economic zone. Unen anytime, zingato ama ngapo mraztab, and udawa na mshumo. Udawa na uniwa go transporto azitu chi angapo mraztab, unen, dombera traini iba one zjobuma, ujuro tusawo ra ma bindu. Rozifuri ra ma bindu ba kota de ya, ngoma, industry ya, ya, ini ya zidrani, uri ube public base. So mara, una unebatu wa ba kwone, one chance to ito, shangla vendor, lidobe, lita kuwe, ribonaare, ngai komia queen. Nda.
Thank you so much, my name is Ndibwa Ramano, I'm from Muduruni, Akutama. I represent the business, the young people who are in business. I reside in Zoot Pansberg region, and my submissions are as follows. As you may know, that young people are faced with challenges, especially with regard to transportation of their goods and services. So we are urging you to bring us this railway line. But we plead that this railway line, like the previous speaker, it must connect to all other local villages so that they can also benefit. You may be aware that the President not so long ago announced the special economic zone to be launched around the Loitrichat-Musina area. Now, what I urge you is that there need to be a railway line that will connect these two places, including the Njerere area, so that they can also benefit. I thank you.
Ni dotoma ngo uluwa. Ah. Ndori, ah. Ni kolibuwa, nendi chiwa era Elizabeth Tambani, ni zura chiosu, niwando imera, msa ndawa chiosu. Zinji, basa bono kavara, mara, zinji zinji, ni dotoma ngo libuwa Paramende, ye ya zivona, zofanera. Nichi do wa ndalibo angamanda, manda zuru, uru, murado wa Paramende, bo, bo, bo bi remrama, do wa be basikele, ba jene ka eh, committee ya, ya, ya railway. Gorri, unera zura one, zura rote, bayasivona tambro ya shu. Nandi kwamba, ni kwamba, ndikariyo bigao, rezulanga nepasim tumure, zitrani zitofi rana ma gutu roseza. Mara, niwono ngari zwa, zino, arali uru ba tuwa dana mumbo, gorri, traini do be ibu yele, rengonani. Renegas shatambula, ngonya gasukatiwa, anarichi antanapas. And nichiko do wa punda libo wa, mubuso wa zino, uru, ukoshumiwa. Zulu, uru, reneva Makado, fara, richi takara, zinji zinji, renero zulansenta. Richi oba mulironi, anepa, chingo na chingo chipirakari, ziyambori, arali na traini ya ba one. Na zozune zwa kwamba, angabasai, zunezwa koto thoma na mini, zichi thoma karine, udo flestu zinji, mshumo yodo ba minchi. And na do wa ndalibo wa futi futu uri, mubuso wa zino, ni mubuso uno ya batuni, bakono zulana batu wa ambasiriro. Na orin gamba, rambasinji zinji, anepa rata ndeana, arali zisengai, zisugueita ya, indiane ba tu ne, reko blame ma one. Nandi bono ngari, ni scotro kandra zikonsi, ba tuwa ne ba kwamba, ri, traini Njerere, traini Ilim. Ni zone, Ilim, ni zibadera churua, uniya ge train. Nandi chikori ka zezuzitu kutuku zunezwa ba one, zezwa buliwa, ngaba na ni, madzina azitichi. Why risa thomi rabona ene po, gorri, rengasoko ambapa noni, asabi na chitichi, na chitichi, na chaitaya. Richi ka tothoma ranyaga zutu, zino tothoma zwa, zwa fara ngacha nda. Richi gorri, why usa thomi wenga zezuzune zwa ba one. Mara, nandi chikori karine, rineba tu rine, ndirine umbone Rafaira, gorri, zione, ziporo. Mara, chitcho thoma, una ala ba tuwa no vanda, bakono oara chipo ro. Nichi gorri, kariseze, eh, eh, nichi kwamba na bo meyaba one anepa. Uri, apa petu, una ba na zituzo fi recycling, why zisa tiveri uwi? Gorri, arali bayaba, warana lama gutu, zipo ro, ibana manda, badiaba, la watu, bakono zista sa, zaya zarengsi iwa. Mara, arali ra blocketsu zwa zirrecycling, nandi bono ngari, zuzote zidochimira, ni kolibuwa, ah.
Ms. Shiweera Tambani is representing her local chiefs, and she is covered by the previous speaker in most things. And she's thanking government, that Parliament, that it's here to receive their views. She believes that most of the people of her area need to be happy because she believes that the government is working, the jobs are being created, government is going to the people. And she also believes that there is no need for us, for, for, for the government to expand the trains to faraway areas. She believes that the local areas need to be prioritized first. And she is advising that the government need to make sure that the recycling shops are being closed in order to stop vandalism of, for the rail infrastructure. Because she, according to her experience, these people are very powerful, they can cut those heavy metals that we see, the railway lines. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you very, before you stand, my brother, you can sit down, let's go to that gentleman there. Let's take the mic to, are you gonna be fine? You can sit down, the mic will come to you. Yes, take the mic to him, please. Thank you.
Machiro, ni ba tuwa ote. Ni ko rumeri sanabu, rumero ote, akonushka duala na musi. Da do wa ndafan nichilwa angamanda na bo dubabuse, ay, riatakara ra bo dubabuse ba one, zothi zia chimira. Nandi ne Bernard Sadiqi, niwone re ama gauka ward seven, niwad committee ya ka ward seven. Namusi ndo dafan ondo rumua, ni gafa seya community ama gau. So, ka ba tuwa ralueni, ba tuwa snel, rotu bo name la traini afalaya. Right ina me, afala ama gau, ea bo, una boden, uru fi Madombija, asma Madombijan. Renegaswa rekondi ma gau, gorri, di ama gau. Reko rotu bo name la traini, traini arai ichko ubu ya, zidori takaa zamusi richi ya Jobek, ziyambori, rengasachitandaan. Redo reko toname la, nepala ka jitechi, richi ko tu, richi ko ya Jobek. Kana traini ichi ba Jobek, ichi da ichi imana kari, rova rekono ina me la, afala stichincha ama gau, richi ko ya chitandaan. So rekofa rekoliwa angamanda ba tuashu, omo shume ne bakuita, aongo leluwa. Ni korri karifare, rekwa tise, narner do ba tu sa, rekale rekoi ma imana, ba tu ba chikonya go kura zipo re, nenge ama gau. Gorri, zura ka cho chipo ro traini, na gutu shepi ray, ziprange nenge unenera zura one. Ro do wa na ba tu ba ndigamanda, ba kunya goncha simbe zasipo. So zidori takaa zamusi traini na gutu, zichko konova zashu, zino shkobana la misiot. Ziyambori, bukebe ngabu dofe la, ni kolibuwa, nda.
Mr. Tendani Sadiqi from Ward Seven Committee. He believes that when this rail transport is coming back, it will assist a lot of people because they are going to be close to their stations. That is the main point that he was emphasizing in this area. Thank you.
Nda, nandi ne Eli Ali Shiva, uva kamubunduwa Muduruni. Ni xkwe ma, ndo ime la ward committee, ni chikwe ime la mubunduwa Muduruni, kana ward twenty-four. And ipasi, achingo chimiso achonovi, Kutama Steering Committee. Nandi believe va kalauri, una traini yonobu ya o, ineni ya Jobek base, ineni ngari, ichimira labra rupezi. So rekori, bangakonori tere ori, arali ka inela ya chikuani, inga mbachi mbrarura ruka bege, will be sorted. Ni xkwe mbera ba tuwa Kutama Simtumure, ngapaka minro di ashu yo 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 ya, hakutama na Simtumure. Una space ichi ne, ba tuwa road and transport, chiba cho tobe cheluru, ngakonitewa something. If ba chinga konori tere, chipo ro, naneringe ba tuwa no go va Jobek to ferneken, bene ba bakoto tuwa angateksi, inga traini. So ringa traini, ba chikosiko one ba bakwa ya one, ziba zichiplungwe, ariko shuma, ariko ola. So zitu zuné ba kori tere zone, rekofa ustu zwa bu delungwe. So nichiko dana ka fence, bana ba shumusi zitrani zonobu ya i, ba do ya goyo zivona. Ara ba si ritera fence, tin na chipo ro, re do wa na zikaka tinjiso, do wa na zix extent zavana. Ga uri, zino, so nichi kwamba nga chipo ro chincha ba one, achina fence, ara ba tu chinga tende ra. Kolominga turiwa, wananga shuka turiwa, maduwa no ba na zisocial media zinoni, zifotoshoot. Ba tu rekoba one sabakwa ba chikameruwa ka zipo ro. Ga uri, arena fence ineni, ra konova reprotected uri, ba tu songo fuke ra ngangi. Karaba ritera one, zingaba zingo ustu zwa kune sa, chingo chendu do chi dazi sa, rekomba rekami shuma ye ineni debekoda. Ba tu nirumbre, ni sunga najia na gacha femili. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Firstly, I would like to greet members of this portfolio committee. My name is Elijah Ali Shiva. I come from Muduruni ward twenty-four, and I'm a member of the ward committee in that area. I also represent an organization called Kutama Steering Committee. I believe we have a train from Jobek that is currently operating. It comes from Jobek to this area, but it only operates once a week. So my appeal to you is that, can we have that train to operate three times a week? Another thing is there's a need for a railway line to our village, where I come from. I would like to send a request to, to, to the committee to say, can we have these railway lines barricaded? Let's have a fence around the railway lines because when we see these trains coming back, our kids will be fascinated to go and watch the trains moving. And they will do that by crossing over the railway lines. And there are those who, it looks like it has become fashionable for people to go and take photoshoots across the railway lines. So can we have them barricaded? The other thing is, we know that the reintroduction of these trains is going to create jobs. But can we look out on the issue of nepotism? We don't want jobs for friends. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. You may come forward, since you are continuing. I just want to once more appeal that we are here to deal with the rail safety bill. I tried very hard at the beginning to pick up particular aspects. Many speakers have gone on the side of the rail safety bill. And I know, as I said at the beginning, the temptation is that when you see parliamentarians, public officials, to raise all other issues. I'm appealing again that can we confine ourselves to what is before us? We have elected public reps, represented by the speaker, the mayor, and everybody, councillors across our municipalities. Some of the things are things we should be raising with them when we do have.
Les police, ministre de police, ministre de transport. Ah, vous savez, ça, non, oui. Ouais, bah, ça veut dire, c'est, eh, méthode où la baba, où l'examen, là, où la baba, où l'examen, là, où qui le veulent, je vous dis, eh, va tu vas, il va, il va dispendir, bah, bah, pour faire police, par exemple, police. Et bon, tu vas, bah, on a les buts, il y a, là, là, eh, safety comme on dit, trainé. So, Gary, eh, bah, j'aime la police, ah, ma, soit, eh, ah, bah, trainé in terms of how to conduct safety in the trains. Gabor, gare, le veulent, je vous dis, bah, tu vas, il est, il est, marre, là, c'est le bel, le gore, c'est le bel, le or, le fapale, là, là, la transport, là, relou, il, il, vous, bah, tu vas, vous, vous, il est, là, car, eh, que le bel, là, bah, tu vas, il va, comme, equipa. Gaze là, y a, or, bah, on, oh, oh, bien, la, ben, trainé, bah, tu sais, bah, tu, qu'en a, or, gavabose, rachon, ah, oh, comment, andrew, là, bah, reggae, ikon make fr- eh, freedom in, in our lifetime. Eh, gefella, j'agago, or, gabor, il va, ça, que tu visas, nager, mais, du, moki, qui va, ben, ben, eh, district municipality, gafa, c'est, ah, mon chat, ouais, ikon make freedom fighters, qui a, le, oh.
Thank you very much. My name, my name is, uh, Silepiani Abram. Uh, first of all, I would like to greet the chairperson, the mayor, eh, the speaker, and the councillor, and, uh, the house at large. Eh, I stand here to, to support, eh, the bill, but, uh, I would like to say, please let us not, uh, privatize, eh, 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 our railways. And, uh, eh, we know that during apartheid, eh, we used to have, uh, eh, some railway police, eh, services, eh, that were disbanded, eh, but now, uh, eh, we, 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 if, when, we realized that they were doing a better job, and then now, uh, I am saying, uh, uh, there should be, eh, eh, communication and, and, and working together between the minister of, uh, safety and, and the minister of, of, of transport. And, uh, also, our police, our railway police should be, they should be trained, and, uh, they should be able to, to protect our railways. Thank you very much.
Greeting once more in the wonderful name of our Lord and Savior Christ, Jesus. A living dog is better than a dead lion. The colivua, nandi Simon Louva, the one, ah, mobunduni, wa, Chikwan, ward twenty-three. No emaila, sin tumore, tukutrama community. Nikofan, dikotakala, amanda, gabor, oh, dasimiswa, zote, zuneza, na, konu, rifa. Eh, nandi, kofan, dikotakala, oré, eh, trainé, eh, buya, gabor. Trainé, ndi, azwisiwa, na, canibal, na, chile, devanga, namela, train. Trainé, ndi, azwisiwa, na, ndichili, wu, chazwisiwa, na, cho farao, panda, mzim. Gabor, transport, ikoba, ba, amanda, zitex, ziko, dur. Nazone, zodou, wa, na, mshumo, sezo, trainé, zo, buya. Zunozuné, na, konya, gauzumbela, amanda, don, ichkonya, gogumbela, oré. Ove, na, tserele, zo, kuru, ngapa, trainé, ni, usongo, ba, na, zezo, ba, zuchitaya, marauni. Esu, la, zori, bah, tu, bah, chief, bah, bo, rayo, bah, la, tu, angama, faster. Technologie, yon, oh, ura, amanda, zue. Kau, ve, na, tserele, zo, kua, ne, eh, tu, kachi, tu, bah, tu, ne, chi, piqua, chi, uru, ne, chaw, oré. Bah, tu, bah, tu, kochimbe, la, gatraini, babe, babe, tu, otsirele, zeyao. Kau, ve, na, security, kua, ne. Nakazu, poro, ngapa, amatungo. Kau, mbeka, na, ove, na, zicamera, zono, konu, seza, uri, usongo, via, wa, na, mutu, anne, ayaku, amachipo, ro, akaki, sa, trainé. Gabor, it's, here, zuka, itumua, chi, poruni, out, usure, ngai, manganga, moutraini, rasuku, ima. If, no, wa, ikochimbe, la, petu, habudi, otsirele, zeyao. Zunor, kumbel, ou, it's, here, zuka, eh, veyo, ne, amanda, usongo, ba, na, bukebe, enganga, moutraini. Esu, ka, ove, zoné, zune, za, konadze, amanda. Uri, bah, tu, bah, chimbe, la, free, otsirele, zeyao. Babe, ba, na, jave, la, bu, dinga, moutraini. Gabor, arali, bah, tu, bah, sa, tsirele, zeyao, uvo, usongo, ite, achitu. Chile, de, kame, ichinyare, ngai, with a security. Kava, il, le, bah, tu, bo, pambana, na, oh, ba, ne, ba, ba, na, ndibo, ya, tsirele, zo, chanda, ngubon, ichisongo, shuma. Kabe, mzimoo, achito, zufa, bah, tu, ba, ne, ba, ba, kanava, rangapanda, na, ba, ne, ba, ba, koshuma, ka, security, nazote, usongo, via, wa, na, chanda, ngubon, inaruti. Nizune, na, kuzera, bilis, sa, esu, nikolivo.
Eh, Mr. Simon Louva, from Chikwan, village in ward thirty-three. Eh, is pleased that parliament is here to listen to their views, eh, and that the trains are coming back. Eh, because, he believed that trains are for the poor people, who cannot afford the exorbitant prices of the mini-buses that are transporting them currently without these trains. And he believed that security need to also be beefed up to avoid, eh, 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 the crimes that were, that had been committed then, when the trains were in operation. Eh, the railway lines need to be jealously guarded to make sure that, eh, no criminal is accessing the railway lines. Eh, he believed that, eh, there is a need to hire relevant, eh, people with, eh, security expertise, eh, in areas of technology and, eh, other important areas. Eh, he is also emphasizing that, eh, we need to avoid corruption, eh, eh, at all costs. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Um, I'm sure you will agree with me that, eh, we have started repeating many things that many people have already said. I don't want to close the meeting, if you still want to speak, but if you notice that there has been a lot of repetition. Um, however, this is your meeting, eh, you need to be considerate of how long you have been here, the heat, and everything. Um, I also want to take the opportunity to acknowledge mahoshi in all your respective offices who are here. We know that you have come here to, to be part of this, which is a sign of your, eh, leadership of the community. We truly appreciate it. I might not call you in your respective offices, but allow me to say, all mahoshi, we greet you all with respect in your respective offices. Um, I will take hands, I see there are hands that are still coming up, but take into consideration what I've said. After I take these hands, I will ask my colleague, Honorable McDonald, to preside over these hands. Um, after these hands, which I believe will be the last round, we are going to ask, eh, Honorable Ramadua to explain to us what will happen with all these inputs going forward. And after that, we will ask his worship, the mayor, eh, to thank all of us. You know, we want to be welcomed and we want to be thanked, eh, by the number-one citizen of this place. So let us take hands, and then after, while I acknowledge those hands, Honorable McDonald will be coming to where I'm seated.
And go tend, as our real.
It's fine, it's fine. Number one, number two. Number three, next to the camera, number four, you, number four. Number five, number five. Yes, number, there was another hand. Is your hand up? Okay, go, go join the queue. Yeah, all right. Um, you may go ahead while I ask Honorable McDonald to come over.
Machero, masari. Eh, my comment is very much, eh, simple and straightforward. According to the, eh, session of today, what I think should have, eh, should have happened is that there was supposed to be two sessions. One session is a session for comments. Because, eh, there are people who are not commenting, and, or, let me say that people are not commenting over this document. They are saying nothing about this document. Eh, also, I think maybe they were given this document before, but if they, no, were, were not given this document before, they were supposed to be talking over this document suggesting according to what is, eh, prescribed here. However, what I can say is that, eh, let me put it in vendor, because this word is too difficult for me. Oh, te, oh, ba, na, section, Billy, eh, section, Billy, eh, noni. Bah, tu, abakon, opes, zore, ngapa, monika, na, abakobara, zudzudzudzudzur, zongwa, ra, ngapa, angom. And zow, ra, ngapa, angom, oh, fa, na, okoto, ba, na, section, yori, okoto, voti, oré, oré, bah, tu, bah, kamba, zore. This group is in support of this bill. We are saying, yes, we support the bill, right? And the section for comment, they say, yes, eh, this is what we are suggesting, in support of this bill. That is my view or my suggestion over this session of today. Thank you.
Eh, the speaker who just left the podium indicated that, eh, eh, there was supposed to be, there, there was supposed to be sort of two sessions. Eh, the first one need to deliberate on the bill, which did not happen. Eh, many people who presented did not talk to the bill, according to the previous speaker. Eh, one, the, the other one need to be deliberating on whether the people are supporting the bill, and, eh, they had to, to vote, to, to, to show their support, or, eh, to show that they are not supporting the bill. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Edim Guena, all the way from ward seventeen. Eh, noy ma, pa, noy melachi, miswachne, chawa, chaw, water, in sanitashen, such a person, yamakado. Na, dona, imma, noy makachimo, cha, ANC, na, dona, imma, kachimo, chow, emelela, zisanko. Nikolivo, wa, mugusoy, wa, worine, we, wa, konna, or, revisela, zui, imiswa, zopa, banana, oh. Bah, railway, parlament, eh, war, amado, ba, ne, wa, tori, sela, ma, funga, worine, oh, mister, bilankulu, na, wo, kuma. Rallyway, wa, na, meya, ra, asanya, zizwitu, anes, tu, jipini, zo, pasfasi, vango, vare, avai, vada, na, wichpika, ra, chavo, pa, no, womnyai, na, womboi. Esu, ra, zuri, wo, zene, na, da, da, zoné, apai, dopfa, una, zambizwini, nasko, yon, kuamba, atu, tu, bah, chambi. Marani, kofa, esu, chkwambi, wa, eh, una, suzuné, na, kofa, azuko, jenise, wa, ngangomu, na, fa, zuchikoi, to, ri, ditaku, endi, amba. Wa, eh, railway line, yaya, ofa, xpinga, chira, apfo. Bah, tu, ofa, na, bah, kugusamutso, eh, yori, wa, yovesi. Di, mapunga, a, oré, wo, meriam, Ramadan, wo, bilankulu, na, wo, komola. Kava, revachika, hangin, ka, borro, ka, chitengwa, chine, chawa, railway safety bill, ka, eh, chapter two, ka, item, number nine, board of regulation, regulator. Kava, jenise, murayo, oye, wa, oré, ayama, funga, azitendara. Railway line, yofanga, zitendara, bah, tu, bah, chikopana, ngachavo, zitendara. Zitendara, ni, zoné, zuneza, kubura, yamishumo, yote, yaralaway, esu, bah, chikova, na, ralaway, siyo. Da, nikoziri, ndopfa, mu, akwamba, ah, na, na, mti, akopan, gorcha, otoma, eh, bah, tu, bah, bah, na, mishumo, ngachavo. And arali, ruspitos, obukuma, eh, bah, chikopana, mishuma, ngaya, ralaway. Daswa, bah, bah, konna, ralaway, yaya, ofa, kaz, trainé, kaz, guzu, yaya, ofa, nakama, busy. Oh, ba, na, ma, busy, maji, maji, ralaway, maranga, oré, oh, ba, na, zitendara, ni, zoné, suzobura, yao, ralaway. Zuna, kava, jené, parlament, eh, ni, bambe, nga, ayama, fungo, ayaya, azitendara. Tendara, ni, zoné, zuneza, kubura, yaya, ayama, fungo, ralaway. Ra, do, ra, wa, na, stuzuné, zawa, zuna, rekozubi, zore, vandalism. Eh, awalani, wa, wa, imma, fa, wa, imma, ra, wa, msanda, wa, chiozwi, wozwi, amba, nyana, udoba, ni, zoné. Za, oré, utbeli, swé, zo, is, zitimbi, zingasipere, gorri, zitimbi, zopera. Kau, ve, na, murayo, wa, oré, esu, matimbi, achi, ya, hangin. Kamoni, chari, we, udobe, ove, na, murayo, okwata, oh, waru, usongo, cha, vandalize, wa, zui, ralaway, line. Gorri, bah, tu, ne, bah, kuvandalize, eh, asu, bah, tu, vandapezi, nariné, riva, ngoba, oné, ané, ra, kuvandalize. Asu, vandapezi, gorri, ayama, timbe, ralaway, kuvandalize, wa, ra, da, ravya, mi, dini, a, worine, ra, do, ra, tendara, wa, irela, ra, is, hangin. Zuna, kau, ve, na, murayo, oseza, awatu, ba, ne, veta, oseklas, zui, zitimbi, zuba, na, lo, rezos, zixeo, chingwe, footi. Kar, do, veris, zé, murao, president, ba, worine, okushumo, ba, ba, oh, ba, na, suzochinyuwa, uba, murao. Zuna, kava, revachika, parlament, eh, ni, kava, seze, bah, tu, ne, bah, kova, tholo, ri, bah, koto, la, bah, tu, bah, quality, na. Kava, do, e, wa, ishumi, se, zofi, through the eyes of the needy. Vasi, jenise, bah, tu, ma, tchotwi, ba, ne, ba, dotwa, chere, de, za, ralaway, asaro, snachitu, ndolivo.
Eh, the previous speaker indicated that, that, eh, most of the things that, eh, he was about to say were said by other speakers, but he had to stand up to raise this important point. Eh, he believed that, eh, people should be asking themselves as to why these services, eh, 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 seem to have permanently, eh, died. He believed that, eh, the tenders, the issuing of tenders is the culprit, the main cause of this, eh, because it, eh, eh, it promotes, eh, eh, corruption and hypocrisy. Eh, he indicated that tenders need to be avoided. There is a need to appoint permanent people who have skills. And, eh, we need to avoid employment of people who, eh, do not have, eh, necessary, eh, expertise. And, eh, we need to also avoid, eh, employing thugs because we know them. Eh, that, that, that is all, in short.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you very much. Eh, my name is Roven Matoma. I'm representing LT Village's community. I support the bill hundred percent, provided there is no privatization. Eh, I can realize that most of us, we don't have, eh, qualitative, eh, inputs right now because we have just received this document just now. Eh, I just want to know, eh, what is the cutoff date for the submission? You have indicated that we can submit through emails, we can get the emails to your support staff. So I just want to know, eh, until when can we submit our qualitative input? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Chairperson, agitomeka, ulimilisa, we, na, lekomi, tika, ofela, ya, kudifule, ya, safe, railway safety bill, kali, ulimilis. Ofekunse, khuya, more, eh, bah, tu, bah, ble, tika, bongha, tu. Agale, le, wa, la, meya, ra, wa, ga, agale, le, wa, la, me, udu, ba, busi. Ta, ba, ki, eh, aritome, ni, gabor, eh, how improve, we, la, in, yane, la, yao, yao, kwa, Johannesburg, to Messina. Ela, in, la, improve, zwa, ove, waru, lukisua, di station, ika, ofela, je, ba, vandalize, je, motilene, kwa, Petersberg, ofika, Messina. Eh, gibulela, gatla, e, ginali, express, yaya, ona. Gibulekle, thirty-six years, ah, railway. And, bah, tu, ba, na, ba, le, le, riki, bah, apartheid, and, eri, varega, le, bo, na, usna, vuchata. Eh, reneki, le, boje, bah, parliament. Ali, ka, hira, great twelve degree, okasi, varegi, wo, americouni. The problem is one. Na, koye, la, le, riki, apartheid, reni, reni, na, li, bah, tu, bah, tina, di station, ni, bah, tu, ba, ne, bah, sa, ruté, yadi. Ula, ofika, bah, bah, butale, wa, bah, outsourcer, the whole, da, department, yah, yah, yachlini, va, ishua, di gate, ni, bah, tu, sa, ruté. Ba, ne, bah, apartheid, ba, na, wa, hira, mutu, ba, zwa, otobareka, and, otoket, otokot, yala, mutu. So, re-improve, renkala, la, ini, je, gawri, redogia, eh, eh, this line, yaya, machamba, esu, ne, ka, na, koye. Na, koye, akemi, re-improve, eh, line, yao, ta, Johannesburg, eh, khuya, Messina, le, li, luma, puto. Na, ki, na, kikiti, ma, le, le, trainé, ta, je, gawri, Messina, luma, puto, kaika, bu, Cape Town, usna, vuchata, karajon. I was working there as an inspector for customer service. Then coming back, twenty eleven, ka, gatwa, peshen, bam, Peter, ka, twenty twelve, ka, we, le, la, ka, varega, oli, main line, eh, from Johannesburg, bu, Cape Town, everywhere. So, re-improve, leni, to, na, di trainé, je, we, eski, bah, trainé, eh, one, pele, di trainé, ne, di, sama, daily. Mara, katwa, yah, oré, utile, bah, butale, jafe, di swanyan. Eh, la, chairperson, was a maid, uno, brulanti, yari, minister, kiana, app, appoint, a, CEO. Yes, eh, vila, yu, ala, le, moro, na, the first CEO, yaya, 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 runa, yaralaway, eh, vila, mst, si, hanima, te, yaya. Ha, ha, o, vota, or, na, ota, ya, arna, aki, aki, submitted, my CV, ki, krumela, ki, minister. After, eh, na, haka, ashu, la, ki, montana, where is railway today? It's nowhere. So, hirani, wa, sa, ruté, a, wo, tli, na, di station, eh, ba, di, re, eh, na, ri, hirani, wa, esu, T boy, from T boy, ki, apply, ya, ki, apeli, ki, apeli. And, that, do, s, dere, gwa, apartheid, ki, sa, wa, le, wa, bah, tu, kana, le, wa.
Greetings to you all. Eh, the, most of the things have been said by the previous speakers. And then the most important thing that needs to be done is that we must fix the role, the, the, the railways from Johannesburg to Messina. Because in the past, when I was, eh, as an ex-railway employer, we were working, looking after, the, 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 the rails were being well looked after, and then we worked with all those people during those, eh, during the era of apartheid. And then the issue, what is happening today, where people are being hi- hired through their qualification and so on. All those things, it doesn't work because it can only serve in the offices. Those people can only do their jobs in the offices, not spate work as such. And then I worked as an inspector, eh, eh, and then things have changed since the changeover of government. Because right now, like, the CEO, the CEO is appointed by the minister. And the CEO would proudly tell you that, I don't, I don't take out any CV to be employed. I've been employed directly by the minister. So all those things, that is starting from the cleaners and the workers of, 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 of railway and the like, that is what has led to the downfall of the railway services. And most, and, and, another important thing is that, at the present moment, there is only one train that comes, eh, the one train that travels at this side a week. So there should be more trains that, eh, come from Johannesburg to this side so that it can help to ferry the people and the goods from the south to the north. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Eh, mena, le, tzakani, Lenox, Nkuna, no ma, ah, ele, mwa, tu. Eh, lesi, ngata, wula, wula, shona, la, wa, ne, ani, shewata, eh, kwenu, we, na, bah, parlament, na, we, na, bah, kwa, la, makado, kwenu, we, na, bah, kunkumba, mingala, wa. Eh, sa, akol, luku, parlament, e, koto, kutzuné, la, akso, eh, na, eh, na, eh, kur. Loku, er, na, swirilo, mikamita, akso, eh, na, eh, na, ekonami, kota, kutiba, kur, kota, klangana, we. Eh, eh, wula, wula, eh, ku, thogo, melashipo, ro, lesi, ingata, aku, lesi, nga, wula, wula, kona, eh, ku, iri, eh, railway safety bill. Indala, le, wula, wula, kwe, ka, oh. Eh, mena, ni, we, wa, ni, wa, kukula, a, ansika, stimela, la, ni, ka, kulela, kona. La, ani, ka, ni, shapsa, astimeleni, from, after school, luku, no ma, a, a, ashkuluene, ani, akushapsine, astimeleni, kur, ni, kota, kuma, mali, okera. Kurimundo, ku, mti, la, ni, kota, kua, ashkuluene, ni, ka, shupi, bah, tu, ar. Kame, air, eh, security, yo, e, emaila, kur, luku, okuma, mono, ar, nan, tambo, or, something, le, yu, ma, kuchporuene. Eh, ku, loku, ilan, teselila, loku, eh, railway safety bill. Mono, ne, atse, ma, ku, shporo, or, ateka, tambo, yakezi, ashporuene, la, kufamba, kushtimela, imda, eh, eh, ku, luku, hitle, ke, ta. Ivan, bangana, wa, ay, ah, ba, taku, istimela, and, inka, shon. La, wa, akota, kuteka, atse, ma, shporo, akota, kua, yashavis. Ilusi, nga, wula, wula, eh, bangwanda, wa, loku, eh, loku, aku, ku, ba, phala, la, wa, wa, recycling, la, wa, isakona, kur, sunga, a, umsul, sesu. Indala, le, yu, wa, eh, ba, arimda, eh, akadha, ba, nu, inkwa, ba. So, otala, ma, ritu, ku, ba, nga, wula, wuli, ni, nga, wula, wuli, otala, eh, kur. Eh, lesi, ntsamse, lakshon, na, niri, nikulili, astimelin, se, loku, shiwu, ilu, na, shon, astimela. Na, wa, na, na, bangatang, eh, na, na, mi, ti, ru, kua, la, stichin, eh, kona, bah, kota, kushavis, a, mena, nikulili, kushavis, nikulili, a, Johannesburg. ani, ka, shapsa, astimeleni, nisama, and, inka, eh. So, ay, otala, ingata, wula, wula, thanks, na, what, we, a, mena, from Elim, ama, bete.
Eh, thank you very much. I, I am tzakani Leonard Nkuna, from Elim. Eh, when I was a young boy, I grew fro, eh, next to the train station, my home was just next to the train station. So we could go there and clean the train when I came back from school. And was just also another part of me guarding against those who were destroying the infrastructure in the train because we could see them when they were destroying. And for me, seeing someone destroying the infrastructure of the train, it's like criminality because how many people are there in the train if someone destroyed those infrastructures? So to me, I consider that as criminal, criminality. And I think trains will also create jobs and, and some people can sell there. That's my submission. I thank you.
Thank you. Um, can we, can we give her a mic so she can sit, um, please, um?
Nandi, fibono, sa, choro, ngamre, nje, ngabzuro, ndo, na, ra, mucha, munga, mungu. Noy, melas, imiswa, zinji, na, dona, ba, amra, zwa, wa, bu, mit, kava, di, tri. Nandi, imela, ba, horé, pari, di, chikoi, maila, na, ba, horé, pari, ba, ote, utoma, ben, bo, zusuka, pa, na, maka, du, municipality. Nikofa, bah, tu, bah, tu, bah, chikopana, bah, tu, akwamba. Abakobu, yah, bah, jenise, ma, fungo, yah, oré, arali, tams, mshumo, uchiko, thomi, wa, koye, ufichi, di, maila, chikobuya. Zipo, ro, zuko, do, shumi, waru, konu, oh, na, ra, mshumo. Atu, kofa, na, mutu, na, mutu, na, kojenise, funga, la, disability. Disability, ndi, mutu, o, atholi, wa, nikombe, la, kaba, ulwa, ne, bang, gavabodao. Ore, arali, rine, ba, di, tpe, kumai. Ure, arali rineba di disability, richi sa di si, vera chifu koto liwa. Vangosa koseza apalan ta rohoro disability ba java chon nyabapa ngabi nimi. Disability inabu dipindureri, disability ofunze ya. Loko ombe la uru chitoliwa, va cheke, tizkara comlops disability. Uro mtu o general mini na mini, goru hunapu ya hola, nori mori pari a, a sabimita. Bato seseza feza apalan ta rohoro fit disability. Vago ja barata, as muu tu, as chitu. Loko ombe la uru station iswate, usna usna zuko itriwa, uchiko itwa, hezo chidimela. Ka uve na zirempa za disability. Uro nabane, bako no uba, bako no ujena zitoilet, bako no uhi ma, bako no namela chidimela. Ga uru nichiko zuseza, nibonanga rumuwa na moko bezela kasa edilau. Chifanda chiri chironda chibaba muwai, andisa ngombura na uru nidi godanda amb. Mara loko pana ma osi achu, venere na ruwa kabo. Never ri riwa itale suwe na suwe richi ita, sa ba hori pari. Mara atiko pava chitakuwa, bachi ma bachi amb. Uri shangola shu na disability, na zone kazi toliwa. Ba orane ba shu, na loko shesala, loko shaba usala riki dinavo meyara, wodubabuse. Loko shesaba usala riki dinavo chipikara cha, wodorkasmboi. Ga uru chitosu kachmika chiotoliwa, redotomo uku zisa kabo. Uri zaxu zisi fit zigai, wa risa ngoto liwa. Loko ombe la uru wana wolo da uku, koto ruwa hone. Chitichi chigwa na chigwa, hajimechi na disability inga gomu, me wey chiko shuma. Isa i uru kanda, unasanda wa jikela apalan, yofunze ya na yoni, ishuma mishuma minji. Ka i toliwa, usaga pono ni haboni, redomu isagai. Una, una abba ma albino, nabane kaba toliwa, usaga pono ni ndunukate. Odo shanga duba, odo shuma gai, va chaga zisi fit zaxu, rezotez disability. Doli bu.
Miss Nomza from Hamucha Watri, representing disabled people. Eh, she is saying that she had to stand up because she didn't hear anyone saying anything representing the disabled people. Eh, including the, 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 the traditional leaders. Eh, she believes that there is a need for the disabled people to be considered when eh, employment eh, when employments are being made. Eh, she believes that the employers are inconsiderate to the disabled people. They do not believe that they are capable or educated enough to can do a specific job. So, she's calling upon eh, parliament to consider that and also to make sure that in each and every train station, there are disability ramps. Eh, she also believes that in each and every station, there is a need for eh, disabled people to be employed because they are also capable and educated. Eh, she emphasized eh, the issues of eh, considering employment and businesses to those who are disabled, all categories of disability. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Eh, doli, doli bua, doli bua, watch finger. Eh, ono kamba panon, di Thomas Munjerele. Imu yemela wasiviki, kawa twelve, madaji. Eh, batuwa achu, o imoa apa eh, nikali ubika. Eh, na wani chi shuma aralwe. Eh, zezo vaschitea, riazu diva, rozu bona ngamato. Do shuma eh, thirty-six years, na wi afano ayani, sa pensioners. Eh, basongomangala kampsi nikadwa wa budi, ludifara zo budi. Ludifara zo budi eh, zia count, chmichpinga. Batuwa achu, arikoli bua, paramente yosi ka yodavatu. Mara usongo ba mafaneza, matu anziye. Ezu dikoto zumbela, kazonda zumi. Batuwa sungori roda, ropirisa chitengwa. Ay, roamba na, ba tuva pesesa. Ka, ka chipooro, zithodea, zono kotodea, ndi safety. Arali bangastopa, zismoksara ngamumu trenini. Badwa vushuma mishuma muruani ngamama. Muhuru ngamanda, o mishuma, ngahori. Batu, baba chidzula trenini, awara inji. Kasu zune bazila, basherela, zididivati ngamumu, bajelwa dzichere. Treni. Zino, zune na zumbela ngamama. Tikoto dojenelela kasu zune, da zubono zori, ey paneli ingasuzkone. Ingasuzkone. Niko umbela ori, mus treni, ichi buya, security kachi ve taiti. Ngahori, one ya do valewa hone, treni dia valewa, gantha na zisigna. Badoba nabatuwa chisuka ba, ba vula ezela zipai pi za vacuum. Treni chitea ori takue, ya stataku. Zino, chidimela chinecha do buya, ka uve na security ine ya do patro. Nikumbelo ya. Ey paneli, nikodoboro, isengoto ba mafaneza, matu anziye. Uri ro davatu ni, richi davatu ni, ra umbela vatuu ri bambe, asa be na nyitu, doli bu.
Thank you so much. First of all, I would like to send my gratitude to the members of the portfolio committee for gracing us with this utmost visit. My name is Ruben Thomas Munjerele. I'm a representative for civic organization from Watrelf. Um, I stand here as a witness to most of the things that were said here. First of all, I would like to say, I'm a pensioner. As, I'm a pensioner and a former employee of Transnet. Even though I may look young, but I'm a pensioner. We give thanks to parliament for visiting us. But this ju, this visit should not just be a tick box exercise. We know that people stayed long, or very long, in trains during their trips. And this made them to be exposed to criminal activities. Now, I appeal to you that there must be strong security system in those trains. Because we know that there are people, because trains, when they are moving, they sometimes get to a stop signs where they stop for a couple of minutes. Now, we know that there are people who temper with the pipes so that the trains cannot proceed with their journey. So, we are appealing that there must be tough security, eh, or strong security system in those trains. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And the final speaker.
Eh, gido tuma udimerisa, government ya reina, le di kansela ya reina. Ni kamo kaba twa vohonamo, kali na la jesu restona zarata amen. Eh, yabulela moke Daniel Maleka. Eh, ya emeju, masada, le di komiti di vohona, villageini ya sivage. Kapasa wat eleven, esero ke eh, kansela ro na lorein machamba le, muat kansela varina elin takalan machao. Eh, gido mo ore, eh, batu, babulela, kari positive.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt you. Can eh, can we just bring the noise a bit down so that we can eh, yeah, everybody can hear the speaker? Um, I'm sorry, you can start again if you want to, or you can continue.
Roko pava tubono takusa, njowa njowa pa nun, rarkombe lora batuwa tebaku mure, uri chi ambi charinga no panda, ruko no chifarote, diari bu.
Eh, gido ore, batu, kamo kaba blezi, kawo re treni eh, ibu, ibu ye ibereke. Eh, gisipichi ka treni from nineteen eighty. Aki tuma vareka meroko ni, waka kamo ka, kiwa gisipila ka treni, locally, le main line train. Eh, lena kiadumeela ore treni ikabu ya. Mara kinali question, yahore, eh, government ya reina, iliveleji na. Ore before treni iba ibereka vyani. Le hanaviya le, usala, esisa bereka budi, kosu ilaya ba eh ni. By iliveleji kosu yai ueni hori, ba dokona uyilukisa na. Yabu be. Yahore, hanaviya le, kinyaka ozivor na treni edlo sepila, es kitzivori ya, ya locally es, eh, ibereksemtakas. Ya main line edlo beriksa malala, kana edlo beriksa locomotive. Ka ore, hanaviya le es in our government, renale problema ya electric, ya lotioni. Hatreni eta, rakasme libutata na, kalo tchedi nere belu ona na. Ore, di lo, kamo ka, je niyaka overiguwa ka treni, di lo dileya, chasirege kala ba kala hori, renale lotioni na. Amen.
Thank you, thank you very much. Eh, my name is Daniel Maleka. I would like to greet eh, our, our panel. Eh, I am standing here on behalf of our community in Wat eleven. Eh, I realized that eh, everybody eh, is talking about eh, or is, is calling for, for, for the, for the trains to, to come back so that we are able to use these trains. And eh, o, o, of course, I have been using trains, I've been traveling by train since nine, nineteen sixty. And eh, I do agree with everybody who's saying eh, bring back eh, the trains. Eh, but eh, I have one question here. Eh, seeing that trains use electricity eh, eh, and, and, and now we are faced with the challenge of load shedding. Eh, how are we gonna eh, eh, deal with this situation? Eh, first of all, have we found the cause of these challenges whereby we find ourselves in the darks, in the dark? And then eh, are we able to, to resolve this problem? Eh, because now, we, we, we are, we are calling for trains, but we're gonna find ourselves in a, in a challenge because there's load shedding, we're gonna find eh, that eh, from time to time, we are stuck eh, on, on, on our way to, to our destinations. Thank you very much.
Eh, thank you very much. Um, thank you to everyone that made the comments and inputs. Um, you're all wondering, um, what's next, what's gonna happen next? And Mayor Matwa, she will eh, give you the processes that eh, will unfold eh, in the future and, and to the end of this ball. And um, then eh, we will hand to the ma, eh, the exec, the mayor here, and then eh, I'll do the closing. Thank you. Eh, Mayor Matwa.
Eh, badwa vachiku, u, debuti soris no ko doti vandispiyo. Feziya, bo Mayor Matwa, badwa da, badwa dombeza zote, zino zodo etiwa. Ga muruha uha, musiwa neka za uphiha. Vapo, rako no neka za, mkanzela ro muñai, va, vari, vari, ribu.
Doli bua, thank you eh, program director for the opportunity. Let me start. Di tome ngau riva, ngauri rozu ifa uru katihachu, renamisanda. Di dombe la uru batu vthe, rilu, baluvena ne, richiko uruva, misanda ile bukatihachu. Karu rube. Mchimbe zamshumo. Kabantendele, di tome ngau resha, na ulibuwa, vo meyara, vo muñai, vo dubabuse. Ndilibuwe, na vos pikara, vo dorkasmboi. Ndilibuwe, nama kansela ra, othe, ah, makado municipality, na district municipality, baneva ba bukatihachu. Riazu diva zori, unasrinji, zebaba baka te ozuita. Fezi, bo prioritizeza, udafa noni huni, rakamba ngamura yuti be, wa utzireleza xipooro. Rikori, reali bua. Mchimbe zamshumo. Kabantendele, di dove hapu, ndilibuwe, zimiso zote, zunesa ba hafa. Musi batu vachiko amb, baba chikosumbi zari, bako bakazu piyo zimiso, reali bua. Di dove hapu, ndilibuwe, nama zangano apolotiki, are bukatihachu, rikoli bua. Di, dove hapu, ndilibuwe, na bazula hapo, ba makado, na vembet, na baneva bakabe vembet district, baneva ba hone hafa. Rikori, reali bua, uva hone abo hafa. Ndizuruane, ngamanda karine, mirado ya paramende, ngahori. Mishumo, zukan na, zingueza mishumo yashu, nusika murayo. Zino musi richi sikamurayo, arko no usika murayo, risinabone. Rifa no ufa, uribone varimini, ndizonesze, rinne, kana muzuachi durobo mango, baziamba hafa uri. Ri, rodo va techeresha, riner dova techeresha, ravanava tu baneva ko konsolideta, bako ngwala, zunevone bako ziyamba. Zino ndizonesune rabona uri, zote ya, uri, ri, ri, ribali buwe. Ngahori, hezi, zebaba vachiko ziyamba hafa. Asim, mafaneza matu anziye. Ndizi tu zuné, rinne, na hababo zura okacha ndacha ngacha monde. Baba bako zingwala, ndizi tu zuné, rinne rado zijiya. Na hezi zebasiamba, zunesu siwale karine, rinne rado zifirisa, rajisa, kazi portfolio committee, zote ya o. Bo ambanga mapungo, ndikoto ba neasumbo, bo ambanga mapungo auri, ufano vanazi nguezi railway line, zunesa establishiwa, atiri. Ziyamba zari, public enterprise, ndivone baneva, ba Transnete, ndivone banava prasa, ndivone baneva shumanazo, rinne rado zifirisa ngautoralo. Rinne hafa, ridoba roseza, mapungo abi, amurayo tibe, wo yuwa, tzirele zaya xipooro. Eh, ndizonesune rinne, rado uziseza, zunesa doiteya. Boni boamba, batu bo ngwala, rinne samirado ya hei komiti, riko yozura. Ra, raseza uribone vorimini, hezi boamba, arali bo utanganeza, wo yu murayo. Raseza na zitu zuné, atiri, kamerayotibe unasikloso, tiri. Zino, arali boamba kazunguza zikloso, ridoba roseza uri, boamba kaifiyo bako rimini. Rako no uziji raja risa paramendeini, paramendeini ya ambaya ambaga ne uyu, eh, murayo tibe. den, rayana N C O P, National Council of Provinces, wa buya, parlamenta enu usika, uchi ba murayo, wa wukuma. So zunoba ko zubona zori, ndi processi, ey ine rabakayo, ine rafno ita. One, chingwe chitu, chiné rinésami rado ya parlamenta roli writer, nd'yezuzu nonfi public participation, nd'yezuzu zunera koba kazo, zunera konyango ufawone, uri barimini. So hezi zitu, kabasidibe zawa uri, zunera koi ta zone, abongo sakoto dine tisa, udahavo, riné rikozibona, rikozijera ntangamanda, uri, bone na bone, bolicha meshumo yavo, baribako udah, uri bade, riné iphe uri bone barimini, ngahoyu murayo yuti be. Zino, hunazezo asumbesiwa, uri, arali basongo konoamba, na uri, arali zimiswa zabo, zisongo kono ambanga zikloso hezi lan. Ziyamba zori, baka dikona uri basubmithe, ka e, ka hababa chanda changa, badoba pazi emaili, havalan, ka baba sez, usika zit thirty first of March 2023, nd'yoni cut off date ya zisubmachine, zunora koi takuelero, uri, bone bazi zimiswa, kabaye bazule, nazimiswa zabo, ba diskaze, tiri, bofiwa murayo yuti be pana musi, basutke ba diskaze na zimiswa zabo, bambe, then, ba emailele, ba ngwale, ba emailele, before the thirty first of March, uri bufiwa havo, bu, bu, bafale na bone uri, bako urimini, ng'ore komiti dozula, ya ziseza hezi zitu, na musi, rinera roto dah, ubatechereza. Chingwe chitu kabantendele, chimbiza mshumo, ndiri, rikoli bua, vaxumeri, bapa ramende, ngami, ngazi sectionizabo zopambanana o, uri, rikoli bua, ngamanda, uri ndimgivera na musi, muwe na muwe uhone, ende muwe na muwe ahone, riazidiba zori, rarofane na roawe, ngorushu, mara, hababa xumeri, bapa ramende, bo jia chpinga cha uri, bako no banarine, musi richiko u, u ambanga, ngahoyu murayo yuti be, rikori, rikoli bua kazo ote. Nd'obe hapu, chimbiza mshumo, ndiri kamirado ey yote ya parlamenta, rialivua, ng'ore, bo jia, bo siyamita yavo, abe hababa batwa va, wetu hopambanana o, mara, bo ri bako udah, uri, bade baba narene kahoyu murayo yuti be, ende, badobe ba nange hafa maka do, uri ri dere ya mbengao, tiri, renazi nine provinces. Hafandi havo na, Rono Thomas, Rotomanotu West ra ya Mpumalanga, zino ra ya Musina, na musi riapa maka do, Rono chimbira ka ey, ka edizi provinces, mara ka ziprovinces, arri hotet onanga, zino, haba mirado, nd'bone bone nanga ho, hafa nuni maka do, rikori, rikoli bua, uri bufiwaxu na hone, hezi hoyu murayo, ono ba murayo, narinera dokonuri, rikoli bua, narinera jenisa bo, eh, uri rifale. Kabantendele, chimbiza mshumo, ndiri, rialivua, kabatu bo te, bodidinaho, baba narene, uri, basongo to zita ka ey komiti fezi, kabasiite ka komiti zote, musi uchi piuna, public hearing ya komiti ipyo na ipyo, basongo zula kabade uri bufiwa havo, bufale na nengei parlamenta eni, n'olivua. Ah.
It's fine, it's fine, thank you, thank you very much. Yeah, I'm giving to councilman, to the official, thank you, from, from, from the Makado municipality, thank you.
Alala maka do municipality, alala. Alala maka do municipality, alala. Alala maka do municipality, alala. Alala mbete district municipality, alala. Thank you so much, program director, Honorable McDonald, who is standing on behalf of the portfolio, Chairperson Air Transport, bane, because of some other commitments, he was forced to leave. We want to appreciate this privilege that we have been given, to come and sit here, especially when you chose us as Makado municipality. In all the municipalities around Umba, after Musina, you said you will come to Makado, and hear the community of Makado in terms of this bill that you have presented today, to get the views and submissions from various stakeholders, and want to appreciate you for that. As parliamentarians, as public representatives, we want to say, you are doing a very good work of consulting communities before you finally take decision. This is democratic, a country where we must allow public participation. The communities must have views, must have a say in whatever we take, especially that affects their lives. So you are doing the necessary thing, the right thing, which you have been elected to do. So we thank you so much. Much of the thanks has been done by my honorable member of parliament, bo, bo Mr. Amadwa, bo , bo libua muwe na muwe, bo libua muwe na muwe, so I don't want to do the repetition because of time. If that's everybody who has a zone, nd'zone zunanende kojia zezila, nobody wangaszezila. Thank you so much. Have a good day. Let's go back and organize ourselves. We have been told that the submissions are expected until the end of March, so we do have an ample of time to go in our own space and then deal with this bill. We come up with submissions that are also in line with the act. We also act, code the act, and we submit before the end of March. Thank you so much. Have a good day. When you go back home, travel safe. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I just want to, quick announcement, I'm gonna ask Meera Matwa to do that so that it's not lost in translation, Meera Matwa.
N'olivua, echichpinga, nenikoto doitana, ndiwazo, ng'ore, batu wono libuiwiwa, ndiwazonde ya uri, hunazee zalugisiwa, zunora dozumbela uri, musi richipe zahapa, batu, badozula he, nepaune baba hone, badoba uzoku, uri, bahitemini, uri bako no wana, zau, zaula. Mara fezi, udotomiwa, ngaba tuwa uruane, na bane baba na zii, tikar, zuné, zasumbesa uri, bo baba ngagomuapa, n'olivua.
Thank you, Meera Matwa. I would like to thank the people of Makado from the bottom of my heart for attending on this Saturday, and with that, I close the meeting. Thank you very much.